Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 13 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Denise.
Council members Jensen,
Here.
Kylie,
Here.
Nightzer,
Here.
Selberg,
Here.
Sale, Starr,
Here.
Brecky,
Here.
Erickson,
Here.
Here to give our invocation tonight is Reverend Brett Best is back with us. He's a regular here. We always appreciate you coming here, sir, with Emmanuel Baptist. So I'd ask you rise for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Just before the meeting, I secured a mayoral pardon for what I'm about to do. And that is to invite you to attend our church's centennial celebrations, August 1 through 8 at Emmanuel Baptist Church. So, thank you. Let's pray. God, our Savior, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for this opportunity to be community. To have love and respect, to work toward the common good, to elevate each person, to be the kind of place that sets an example, the kind of community that people love and are proud to be part of. I thank you for these folk who give so much of their time. Pray your blessing upon them. And, Father, we would also appreciate some more rain. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Reverend Best, for joining us tonight. For that, we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. Look for a motion or any changes to be made there?
Move to approve.
Kylie? Second, Jensen. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move on to item eight, regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move approval.
Second, Kylie. All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve our agenda for tonight. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on that.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Before we continue on with our regular agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes. Unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input, at the end of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. With that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item nine, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain real property of the city surplus and authorizing exchange of city land with a private landowner, sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Andy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Andy Berg, Public Works Engineering. Tonight, thank you. Second reading on a land swap for our 49th Street extension. On the exhibit shown on the screen represents the two properties that are being swapped. The yellow is currently owned by the Wind Group and is necessary for our 49th Street to go pass through that area. And the swap would be for the area in red, the city drainage property in that area. Drainage, currently a pond area. The analysis has been done to ensure that the pond still has proper volume capacity with the road and that area coming out of that pond area, so.
All right. All right, thank you, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselor, you have any questions for Andy here? All right, look for a motion. Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Nightzer.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Nightzer to approve item nine. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Move to item 10, please.
Second reading and ordinance approving the annual rate increase pursuant to the franchise agreement for ground ambulance service for the city of Sioux Falls with Paramedics Logistics, South Dakota LLC, sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Alicia.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor, Alicia Colora, City Health Department. I'm here with Damian Gonzalez, the COO of Paramedics Logistics, PC EMS, for the second reading of the ambulance rate and annual ambulance rate increase. The agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and PC EMS stipulates how ambulance service rates or fees will be set and specifies that the annual rate increase will be the greater of 3% or the Consumer Pricing Index for any given year, which for this year ending May 2021 was 5%. Therefore, the annual rate increase being requested by PC EMS is 5%. Through the annual ambulance contract report, which you were able to review and was approved by REMZA, we know that PC EMS has met their contractual agreements for the preceding year. And we also know that REMZA has approved their request for the 5% increase. So this item is ready for your consideration.
All right, thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Alicia here?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you. Assistant Director, I guess my questions tonight revolve around the fire department doing transports and how we handle the billing, how we collect. Well, let's start with that. That's enough to bite off at one time. So how, when do we invoice or who invoices for the city's part of the calls that they're transporting?
Yeah, I think that would be best answered by a member of the fire department, but I can also ask Damian to weigh in.
So Counselor Member Starr, currently, we have a report received from the fire department any time they complete a transport of patient care report. That, once it is received, approved, and verified, the EMS division of Sioux Falls Fire Rescue invoices patient care EMS. That has been done for 2020. We're doing the first six months of this year in the end of this contract period, and then we're going to move to a month to month moving forward if there's any that occur.
All right, thanks, Damian.
Oops, hang on, just if I can, Mr.
Go ahead.
Yep, then, one of the, when does fire rescues billing start? Is there a partial if they arrive on scene first and start treatment and care and then they're transported by PC EMS? Or is it a one or the other as part of the billing process?
So for EMS billing, it's based mainly on transports. There are some very few exceptions to that where on scene charges do occur, but that is done by the ambulance company.
Awesome. And then one other, just to follow up. How did we, when we started doing this, how did we get to the point, because the biggest holdback of having the fire department transport was the liability end of it, that all of the liability really begins in part of that transport? So did the city add additional liability coverage, or how did we get around that part of it or to make sure that we're properly covered and the liability end of it's taken care of?
Absolutely. So the agreement does cover liability to each party, obviously. As far as coverage goes, that would be something I would have to defer to one of the chiefs.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Alicia or Damian tonight? Move approval? Second, Jensen. All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg, Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move on to item 11, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to fund the Link Triage Center, building improvements and operating support from state grant proceeds, $800,000. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July 20, 2021, sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Alicia Colora. Once again, this reading, this first reading is a continuation of a conversation we had earlier this evening at informational regarding Senate Bill 186 and a $3 million appropriation to the city of Sioux Falls. The funds were appropriated by the state to the city to support behavioral health and mental health services and crisis stabilization. And those services are to be provided through the Link Triage Center in partnership between the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, Sanford Health, and Avera Health. In order to move forward with drawing down grant fundings, this supplemental will appropriate grant proceeds of $300,000 to the Health Department to support operations and $500,000 to facilities to support capital improvements.
All right, thank you, Alicia. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? All right, counselors, do you have any questions on this item? All right, look for a motion then to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July 20.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen on that. Do we have any discussion here? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Move on to item 12, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving permanent easements. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July 20, 2021, sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Dustin.
Evening, Council, Mayor Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. Tonight's item is related to the development of the Steel District and Phase 3 of the River Greenway that is currently under design. In order to coordinate access to the Steel District development as well as Kiwanis Park and the future improvements that will occur within the Greenway, there are a number of items that will come forward for council's consideration. The first item is on your agenda tonight. It's a first reading of easements that would be granted from the city of Sioux Falls to the Steel District development to promote access to the development and the adjoining Kiwanis Park and future Greenway improvements. Also associated with those easements, there'll be two resolutions that'll be coming forward at next Tuesday's meeting, contingent upon going to second reading here tonight. Those resolutions would be related to a park purpose resolution for parking stalls that would be constructed within the easements and that those parking stalls meet a park purpose. Those parking stalls will be available and open to the public for use. And finally, in exchange for the easements that are being requested here tonight, there would be a land gift agreement between Lloyd, C.R. Lloyd Associates and the city of Sioux Falls granting the land in which a portion of Phase 3 of the River Greenway would be constructed. So a part of the land that the improvements would be constructed on is privately owned currently, and this would exchange that gift of land. So again, just to remind everyone of the project and the location, this is the north seven and a half acres of the former Sioux Steel sites in downtown Sioux Falls between Falls Park West, Levitt at the Falls, and the Big Sioux River. On this exhibit, we've seen this several times, but this shows how access to the site and to the future park improvements would be maintained. That would be through Fourth Street that would cross Falls Park West from Phillips Avenue into the development from the west. And then there would be an extension of a road that would go north and south down to Sixth Street that would provide access along the eastern edge of Levitt at the Falls. This exhibit here illustrates a little bit more of the main reasons for consideration of the easements that are on the agenda tonight, and that would be to provide emergency access through and around the sites for the proposed developments. As you can see from the property line outlined in purple, some of the emergency access needs do extend beyond the property line. Therefore, the need for the easements in areas of Falls Park West and Kiwanis Park. What also is really illustrated by this exhibit, you can see where Kiwanis Park is on the very top of the screen, and then the area where the future phases, the Greenway, would be constructed along the Big Sioux River. There is very, if you were to go out there today, there's very limited access to be able to even get to any of those areas. And by working with the development and coordinating with the development to do these easements as well as the easements and land grant, land gift that we're discussing here tonight, we're able to provide that connectivity to those future improvements. This exhibit illustrates the easements that are being granted from the city to the developer, so those are outlined in blue. There's six total easements that are part of your ordinance here tonight that would be granted to the development. The area in green is the area that would be a part of the land gift that would be transferred to the city in exchange for those easements. The total area of the land gift is 1.12 acres. The total cumulative area of the easements would be 1.09 acres, so pretty much a straight across area swap. I will note that the, on the very far right-hand side of the screen, there is a tiny triangle area that's outlined in red. That would also be another item that will be possibly bringing forward for council's consideration at the future date. That's just not being brought forward tonight because it is dealing with a different adjoining landowner. This exhibit provides an aerial background, so it really shows the future plot of the property. So the three, or actually five buildings that'll be eventually built on the site and how the land will be subdivided between those sites. It also shows Lot 4 on the very top left-hand side of the screen, which is the gifting land that would be gifted to the city of Sioux Falls. And it does show the easements in blue. So again, this kind of overlays the two prior exhibits where it shows the easements that are being gifted to the city as well as that emergency access that'll be generated throughout the site and the development. So all of the easements that are on your agenda tonight all have very similar language. All of the proposed improvements will be constructed and maintained by C.R. Lloyd Associates. The easement property must remain in good and usable condition and allow ingress and egress throughout the site. Any of the improvements that will occur within the easement areas are required to be reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Department, and the easements each dictate which the, what those improvements are. So throughout all of the easements, what those improvements are associated with, are the emergency access needed, the roads, as well as the public parking stalls that would be provided. So all of the easements are conditioned upon executing all of the easements and conveying the land gift to the city. Also, completion of the improvements and all of the conditions that are, again, are associated with the easements. We have tied all of this together as one package in order to achieve kind of that desired outcome of access to the Steel District property as well as Kiwanis Park and the future improvements to the Greenway. This slide does summarize what the land donation would be from C.R. Lloyd Associates. Again, it's the 1.12 acres highlighted in yellow. Once they purchase the property, they will transfer that land to the city, and that will allow for us to complete the future improvements of the Greenway. So all of the items, all of these items have been presented to the Park Board that occurred on June 16. There was, we did receive support for that and a recommendation for approval for council's consideration. So tonight's item is to set a second reading on July 20. And at that time, we would also include and bring forward the resolution for the park purpose related to the parking stalls as well as the resolution of the land gift from C.R. Lloyd Associates to the city. So with that, I do have Don Kearney and Tori Media here from the Parks Department, along with Luke Jessen from Lloyd Companies, if there's any questions.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, any questions for city team or the Lloyd team or the Parks team? Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Thank you. Dustin, a couple of questions for you. This slide is okay, or if you go back, this, this highlights, so, okay, so when we talk about the land swap, tell me in the original plan who intended to develop the land in which is now being gifted to us? Was that supposed to be developed by the city or within the TIF that was given to Lloyd?
The, the conversation of the land swap and all of these easements has been occurring since the beginning of the TIF conversation, so 18 months ago or further. And it has always been anticipated that this would be brought forward as a land swap or a gift to the city. So the city is always intended on doing the Greenway improvements.
Okay. I guess I wish I would have known that when we talked about the TIF from the beginning, because as we look at this, you know, and that's their land and we're, we're gifting it and it makes sense and we need safety, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but just good information to have as we look through that because the redevelopment of the Greenway is going to be very, very expensive. And so, in my mind, as I saw the development agreement come forward and all of that happen and take place, shame on me for making that assumption, but I guess I didn't have any other information that I had assumed that would be then their responsibility because this is real close to that restaurant. And, I mean, I understand it all needs to happen together. I'm, I'm just trying to process this presentation and this information through all of it, because again, I want it to be safe. I'm fine with land swaps. It's just that dollar amount of who's developing what and when would have been really nice to have from the get-go, just my two cents.
Any other questions, Counselor? No, okay. Any, any other questions? Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
Question for the city attorney. The question that I have that has, has not been addressed yet, as far as I know, is, is the city attorney's office giving us their opinion that both of these properties that we're swapping are parks are in fact designated city parks?
Both parcels that we're swapping, I guess I'm not following that, Counselor. The, obviously, the one that would be the continuing phase of the River Greenway, but are you talking about the easements? Or what's the other parcel that we're swapping here?
We're saying that, that these properties, you know, have, there's certain statutory privileges that attach to park property. And is, is, is my understanding, I guess what I'm asking is, are these city parks? Because I had the city clerk do some research for me, you know, because I just wanted to make sure that that stone was turned and then that it was. And one of them, all we can find is that one of them is on the city website. And, and so presumably, if it's on the city website, it's a park, there's no action actually taken. The other one, the city acquired, you know, in a lawsuit, and it was just added to the master, the Falls Park master plan, which of course was approved by the council, and it was part of the CIP project, which was approved by the council. But there's no, you know, no declaration, you know, that actually indicate that these are actual parks. I asked him to do some further research, and he's working on that for me, because this may be something that we have to clean up later. But it's, it's miss, miss, a mismatch, a mi, what I want to say. There, there's, there's differing ways that we've done it in the past, when it's our property that's not been deeded to us by somebody else as a gift. It's a mismatch of, mismatch of, 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 some are actually declared something and others, we just started using them as parks. I'm, I'm concerned that in the future, you know, all of our city parks that are being used as city parks should have that protection, you know, should have that protection, for example, that in order to, you know, if you wanted to develop one of our parks and all of a sudden, you know, turn, let's see the, the place right beneath Levitt at the Falls. Say we wanted to turn that, we just want to turn that over and develop it. Well, if all it takes is to change the CIP, then that would deprive the public of that right to vote on whether or not it should be kept a park. So it's a great concern to me, even though it sounds like a small thing. And I wondered if the city attorney's office has been asked to actually address that issue as it applies to these two parcels? And then, I guess, in general, you know, when it's city-owned, acquired property, you know, how do we make it into a park so that it has all those privileges attendant to that?
Sure, and I don't know if I can directly answer that. What I will say is we've done extensive research on these parcels, on these easements, on everything to make sure that this transfer would be legal. We have been able to do that. We have determined that the city is able to utilize these parcels and the functions that this plan would intend. With respect to the actual declaration of it being park property, I guess I'm not prepared to answer that specific question for you tonight. But we did go through this to make sure that this transaction as proposed would be legal and that the city would not be crossing any lines by, by engaging in this behavior and making this transfer.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, then I guess I'm confused because is it a park or isn't it a park? Have we declared it? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to watch my phrasing because when I get a memo to brief me that's confidential and attorney-client privileged and it doesn't ever be turned over to the public is how the, the email reads. I'm confused on how to ask the question without breaking confidentiality, which is really, and so the bottom line is, how do we know it's a park?
There's, there's, I think, a few factors that come into play, right? You can look at the deeds for the land, everything going back to whether or not it was dedicated as a, for a specific park purpose, or if there were any limitations on any of that, that land gift or purchase, the deeds, anything that limits it at that time or encumbrances the use, right? If it's not encumbered by any specific language in the deed, that gives the city more flexibility with how that land wants to be used. And so, I guess, absent any specific declaration or limitation in, in that deed, I guess I can't answer that any further other than to say that there aren't any limitations in the parcels that we're addressing here. And so that's why the city attorney's office believes that we can move forward with this, this proposal.
So then let me, let me do it as a hypothetical, like, to keep me out of trouble from revealing something. I guess I shouldn't reveal with the, the legal background. If we ascertained a similar piece of property and we, today, how would we make it a park?
A couple of ways. One, I mean, if there was a limitation or, or a restriction in the transfer of the land, that would say it need to be used for park purposes, right? Otherwise, there's reversionary interests. That's probably the cleanest. Other than that, I guess it can be used as a park, but there aren't legal, necessarily all the legal limitations that, that would come with future use or transfer outside of what's in that deed restriction.
Or I can just call it a park and it's a park and it has the park protections? Because we put it on the website?
I'm not going to go that far, Counselor.
I know I wouldn't. I'm trying to drag you there. It's doing the best I can. Takes care of my confusion, I guess. Thank you.
Other questions on, on this item? All right. Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July 20. So move, Jensen.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. Is there a discussion on the council on this? Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad that we've got time between first and second reading, because I would like to have an opinion from the city attorney saying it's a park. Now, for this particular issue, it doesn't really matter because even if it's not a park, it's just easier because it doesn't have all those protections provided for it. But for the future, we need to make sure our parks are parks so that they have those, those protections attached to them because they really belong to the public and the public has certain rights, you know, you know, separate from the governing bodies as they come and go in the history of the city. So, you know, before the next meeting, I would like to have it as it applies to these two properties, because one of them was acquired by lawsuit and one of them was purchased. So it isn't an issue of, you know, of, of conditions attached to a deed. Neither of them were gifts. So, and if it turns out, you know, again, it doesn't really matter on this one. It just makes it easier if it's not. But if it turns out that they, that, that we should be doing something like passing a resolution for all of our parks to make sure they're all parks, I think, you know, that's something that would be easily done and, and make sense in the future. So I will be voting for this, and I, but I do want, would like to see that research and get those questions answered in the bigger picture.
Any other discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote then.
Council members Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Nightzer,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Brecky,
Yes.
Erickson,
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move on to item 13.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain property of the city of Sioux Falls surplus and approving gratuitous transfer of real property by gift agreement. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July 20, 2021, sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jason Bieber, Planning and Development Services. I'm excited to be able to present tonight an item 13 and 14, our last two approval items for our Veterans Community Project of Sioux Falls. With the council's support with these two items this week and then our second reading next week, we'll be at the stage where we can actually, the property will get turned over to Veterans Community Project and they can do what they do best, which is build the a tiny home community to help our local homeless veterans. So we're pretty excited with this. As Denise indicated, item thirteen is declaring the property a surplus and approving the gratuitous transfer and then a gift agreement. And then the following item that will kind of be together with this is the resolution determining that it's the best interest of the public to give this property to Veterans Community Project. So just to give you an idea, we've seen this a couple of times, but the property is located just north of Axle Park School, off east of Western and south of Burnside. It's about one point eight-four acre site. The purpose of this site is the, where the Veterans Community Project out of Kansas City is looking at constructing a tiny home village for homeless veterans. That village would consist of roughly twenty-two single-family homes at two hundred forty square feet, eight, three hundred twenty square foot family homes, and then also VCP Village Community Center. I just run through some quick components of the gifting agreement, some of the things that, the major things that we have in there is, part of it, VCP is required to commence construction within two years of the conveyance. That would be after the ordinance is approved next week. Another milestone would be complete fifteen tiny homes in the community center within three years of the conveyance. And then one of the other major ones is they need to maintain that status as a 501(c)(3) organization going forward in the future. If any of these milestones are not met, that property then would revert back to the city. So I'm here to answer any questions. We also have Vincent and Ben from VCP over here in the corner hiding out, here to answer any questions if you have any for them, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilor's questions for Jason or for the VCP guys? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bieber, I guess my question is, normally we wait with fourteen with the resolution till second reading, just to not get the cart too far ahead of the horse, but was there a reason you thought it was important to be part of the first reading?
I, I was told by the attorney's office this is the way it had to go.
I don't mess, I don't mess with the attorney's office.
When the attorney's office tells me to do something, I usually do it, so. No, I just, it's, yeah, me too. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason or for the gentleman from VCP? Move approval? Second, Jensen. All right, we got a motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. That will be to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July twenty. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item fourteen then's the companion item to this.
A resolution determining it advisable and to the best interests of the public to gratuitously convey without payment certain real property owned by the city. Sponsor, Mayor.
This is once again for the VCP project and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this resolution? All right, councilors, any questions on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen. All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve item fourteen. Discussion, councilors? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifteen, a resolution approving the release of a telephone easement located in House Track Two A in addition to the city of Sioux Falls and Track One of House Fifth Addition to the city of Sioux Falls, all in Minnehaha County, South Dakota. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Brian Wilcox, City Engineering Office. First item is a telephone easement release just south of Sixth Street on the Sharapa property. The telephone easement was established by Platt in nineteen eighty-nine. The easement was dedicated for public use. No facilities are located within the telephone easement to be released. The owners, Sharapa Place LLC and Howe Investment Company LLC have requested the telephone easement to be released. Engineering requests your support and approval to release the telephone easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this one? Council, got any questions for Brian here? Move to approve. Nitzer? Second, Kylie. All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie to approve item fifteen. Any discussion on that motion, council? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Move to item sixteen.
A resolution vacating a portion of North Powderhouse Road right-of-way lying adjacent to below said properties as shown on Exhibit A. Recommendation set a date of hearing for Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Sponsor, Mayor.
Again, Brian Wilcox with City Engineering Office. Item sixteen is a resolution to vacate a portion of North Powderhouse Road right-of-way. It's located over kind of in the northeast part of town, over off East Madison Street and Veterans Parkway. This is to set the date of hearing for August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Developers' approved development plan will not utilize this portion of public right-of-way based on their approved DEP. The owner, Golden Gateway LLC, has requested the right-of-way to be vacated. Engineering requests your support and approval.
All right, thank you, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Councilors, any questions for Brian here? Move approval? Second, Kylie. All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to set a date of hearing for Tuesday, August tenth. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Council, any new business we got tonight? All right, hearing none there, we'll move on to public input. Public input will last no more than three minutes per person, and during general public input, the public is welcome to speak on items that we didn't cover earlier in the evening. So anyone for public input, come on up. Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zokitis, and tonight's topic is parking fines. So when you have a law, you might need a fine to go with it. Fines encourage cooperation and compliance. They also provide a penalty for non-compliance, and they might make the city a little bit of money, but hopefully that's not the emphasis of the fine in the first place. Now, in Sioux Falls, our parking fines start off pretty modest. I, I find that to be rather generous on the part of the city, but then, oh my gosh, if you're late, you've got kind of a crazy increase of penalties. And here's, here's what the law says, our city ordinance. If you're within seven days, that's one fine. After seven days, it's another, and then after thirty, it's a different fine, and after sixty, it's another. All right, so if we have an excessive increase in fines, I think that's designed to pressure people into quick payments. Businesses don't do this, but government does, and, you know, I think you're trying to avoid due process of law and fair trials. And there's a quote of the Bill of Rights, you're not supposed to say unusual fines and cruel payments and that kind of stuff. So here's an example for improper parking. Within, if you do it quick, fifteen bucks, not too bad. If you're a little late, it doubles. After thirty days, it doubles again. That's a factor of four. And here's the schedule of fines for all parking fees. Again, starts off low, doubles, doubles again. So I've got some recommendations like I always do, and that is to respect due process of